We're ready. Thank you for your patience.
We're going to call to order the Committee of the Whole for April 8th. At this particular time, we do not have a quorum. We will have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor? Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Hussein? Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Garza?
We have Councilmember Garza who has an excused absence and Councilmember Spitzley who has an excused absence. We will forego the minutes at this time until we have a quorum. That takes us into public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment at this time? If you would please come to the podium, give us your name for the record and...
Can this be about the red cedar?
Yes.
Okay. Loretto Stanaway. The public voted to sell this property. They did not tie their vote to any particular development agreement. I want people to remember that. If I were at the negotiating table, this is what I would say. Up the price for the sale of the property to five million. Cut the brownfield term in half. Include a phrase saying that there can be no Oprahs at the end of the 30-year brownfield. If we're going to be stuck with them for 30 years, they should be stuck with us. And that would force them to maintain their properties. They should be telling us how much profit is enough profit for them to go forward with this. And they should show us in writing what occupancy rates they're using for projections of how many jobs and how many apartments and how many hotel rooms and et cetera would be based the income that they're projecting would be based on. We need to quit coming from fear and from manipulation and come from power with no settling. This project is way too much concrete and hardscape, especially toward Michigan Avenue. There is nothing visually attractive about this as it stands. They are the only developers that have come forward at the time probably because the other developers knew this was in the works. And other developers were exhibiting common sense, knowing they would be fighting against the natural environment trying to put a proposal together like the one we're looking at. And they would have probably done something different and not fought against it, not taken the swampland in Florida or the swampland in Lansing and tried to turn it into Disney World, but to go with it instead of against it. You don't tame the project to the land, you tame the land to the project. Lansing is open for business, but we are not open for fleecing. It's a new day. It's time for us to not try to be Columbus or Madison or San Antonio, but to be Lansing. I don't know if the city-owned parking structure phrase is still in there, if part of the parking structure would be city-owned or not, I'm not clear on that. I do know that in talking with the drain commissioner at Jody's meeting, they gave a misstatement of information on what it would cost per pound to clear the pollution. The cost per pound of pollution of 75,000 pounds per year at $32 million for the project is $426.66 per pound per year to clear that pollution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda for our presentations. We'll first start out with the Community Development Block Grant budget presentation. And if you could please come up to the table and make sure that the green light is on. In your packets, you have the proposed funding allocation. And for those of you that might not be familiar, even though this is part of our budget, these are actions that have to be taken before we actually pass our budget. So tonight, we'll be listening to the presentation as well as setting the public hearing for the budget and the action plan. And who would like to start? Is the green light on?
Oh, no.
All right.
Now it is. Good evening.
Put a little bit closer to...
Hello?
Okay.
Can you hear me now? The green light is on.
The light is definitely on.
The light is on.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Good evening. Oh. Yeah. I had to talk some. Okay. This is the City of Lansing's action plan for 2019, which covers July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. This is the same process that we go through every year in accordance with our citizen participation plan and HUD regulations. There are certain things that I have to do before I submit the action plan to HUD, which is due on May the 14th. However, let me tell you some things that are going on. Well, let me first of all mention what this document is. Our federal funds for our Community Development Block Grant, our home dollars, and our Emergency Solutions Grants. Community Development Block Grant covers items like housing rehab, weatherization. Home dollars cover down payment assistance, new construction. And our Emergency Solutions Grant covers emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, homeless prevention, items like that. And so this entitlement grant, and we submit this to HUD on the 14th of each year. However, again, we do not have our federal funding allocations. But I cannot stop my process. I need to continue withholding my public hearings and getting your approval on this. But we will have to come back to City Council because one of the things that we submit when we submit our action plan is a resolution approving submission of the action plan. And once we get the actual numbers, we will need to come back before you. What we've done in this budget, however, is just plan like we did the last year with our federal funds. The allocations are the same as they were last year, and that's what HUD tells us to continue to do, plan like, you know, we receive the same funding as we did last year. We do have some program income and previous year's funds, and I guess Don can talk a little bit about that. But that's how we've planned this budget.
Doris, can you tell us from last year's approved budget to the one that was submitted, did we receive more or less dollars?
We, I think we, I think we received a little bit more in community development and home, and I think we received a little bit of a decrease in ESG.
And Don is shaking his head.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay.
They were small amounts, though.
Yeah. They were really minimal amounts.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. You mentioned if you change or HUD asks you to do the same thing. I guess how much control does HUD have over, you know, the, all the numbers here? For example, the street outreach activities that has $5,000 allocated to it?
Are you talking specifically about Emergency Solutions Grant? Because, okay, Emergency Sol...
No, I'm sorry. I'm just shaking my head like, oh, this is information. I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, okay.
Like, how much control? I guess...
Well, Emergency Solutions Grant is a little bit different because prior to 2011, it was considered Emergency Shelter Grant. And then we had the HURTH Act, which changed the whole name of it, sort of revamped it because we have homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, and we had that for about three years. And communities did so well with that, and HUD really liked the results that were coming in, that they changed the name to Emergency Solutions Grant. So there are six components that are eligible for Emergency Solutions. We have homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, street outreach. We have administration funds, HMIS, or Homeless Management and Information System. And with the street outreach and the, I think it's the homeless prevention, there's a certain percentage of the allocations that you can put in there, and then we can put seven percent or 7.5 percent for administration. So we, the, I sit on the continuum of care, which deals with the homeless population. So when we get the pot of money, there are certain amounts that we can put in each of those categories. So that's why I'm saying, but CDBG and home is a little bit different. So I'm not sure if that answers your question. Okay.
So, under each of these allocations, is there a percentage that can be utilized up to a certain percent when you're making the determination?
Well, with admin, for example, with Community Development Block Grant, CHODO dollars or Community Housing Development Organization, what is it, 5%? And then, what's the other one?
I'm sorry, the CHODO said it. I believe it was more than that, but that's not, 15%, isn't it?
Okay. So there's, for administrative costs, there's a certain amount set aside for both CDBG or, and home dollars. But for community development of the pot of money, they look at what is needed in the community. And so they basically develop that, the budget, based on that.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Madam President, thank you both for being here tonight. Looking at the different proposed funding amounts in each of the items, for instance, the CDBG Single Family Owner Occupied Rehab Program Public Improvements is estimated at, proposed to be $1.5 million. Do you have data that shows what these amounts were in last year's budget? So, you know, the rental rehab program is $380,000 now, or acquisitions $100,000 now. What was it in the 1819 plan?
Well, it was in last year's budget.
They're using last year's budget.
Yeah.
This is just, it's going forward?
Correct.
I'm sorry. If it wasn't clear previously, and I hope it was, right now, we don't have our allocations from HUD. If you, okay, so we don't have our current allocations for this upcoming year from HUD. So part of the number you're seeing here is last year's figure. There is nothing else we can do. We do this every year, it seems like. So I think that you're, at least some members of Council are familiar with this process. We come to you now, using last year's figures, and setting the public hearing.
Okay.
This was what HUD wants us to do. They want us to keep following our citizen participation plan. But they're going to get us the real numbers late. And when they get us the real numbers, we'll be back at that point in time for the final approval of this action plan in front of this body.
Okay.
But it'll go up a little or down a little. Usually doesn't move a lot in any given single year.
But these numbers are what we, what were approved last year for...
They were, what was approved last year is modified by estimated, what's different within these numbers is estimated program income and estimated available unspent dollars from previous years. That's what's different.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
But the federal funding allocations are the same. And every year, we get a guidance from HUD on the action plan. And so the latest that I can submit it is June 25th, and by statute, August 16th. But I'm aiming for June 25th meeting. And I just want to remind Council, if we do not submit an action plan, we will not get any funding.
Right.
And I think it was clear before, but I'll repeat, the key here is getting the information from HUD. We will bring it back to you expeditiously once we get that final award from HUD.
And sometimes that's past our budget cycle.
It has been in the last two years, I think. And so that's not at all uncommon.
I'm looking at a notice for supplemental amendment to the city's annual action plan, 7-1 2018 to 6-30 2019, which is stapled to the back of the action plan that we have. There are some recommended changes to that, and I realize that isn't for the upcoming budget, but the budget that we're currently in. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's no budget change or budget amendment required, but the action plan for this current year does have to be amended to allow those funds to be moved into that particular activity.
I would like to discuss a couple of those. What I'm seeing is the fact that you're reducing the owner occupied rehab program and increasing the acquisitions that would be used for, I believe, make safe and demolish in a flood, this is, it's not make safe or demolish, but floodplain for taking down properties within a floodplain.
It's not limited to the floodplain.
It's not limited to that.
It's not limited to the floodplain.
Okay. My first question would be, are we not able to utilize all the money that we had programmed for the single-family owner occupied housing rehab?
Well, there's a lot of money. That's a, you can see by looking at the numbers, then, the majority of the money we get from HUD goes into that particular category. And that category covers more than just the single-family owner rehab. There's public improvements are in there, and other, other things are in there. And we had thought, I mean, we learn every day as well, that blight remediation could be covered by that category as well. But on further review and a deeper dive that we took some time ago, several weeks ago, we realized that in order to do some additional blight remediation, that we needed to recategorize some funds into the, what's called, I hate these titles, but it's what we're stuck with, acquisition. Even though we're not technically acquiring any of these properties, we're actually just going to fund the demolition of these properties.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because I know when I'm out in the community and people are talking about the program, and we recommend people to go to the program, oftentimes, what we hear back is unless it's an emergency, we have almost a year's waiting list. So my question is, is it because we don't have enough staff to handle the number of requests? Is it the fact that we don't have enough funds to handle the request, or enough contractors to do the work?
Oh, it would be some of all of those things, but the most pressing thing would, would be staff-related. And the reason for that, and we discussed this, I think, last year, is because we give priority right now to our, let's say, Lansing program. So that staff time is dedicated to the many, many, many lead safe Lansing projects we have going that tend to be smaller projects. So they tend to spend less CDBG funds. There's a CDBG component and a, and a lead grant component to essentially every lead safe Lansing project. And so there's a lot of projects going on. Our guys are very, very busy in the field, but they tend to be smaller projects in terms of the overall amount of money that's spent. So, but, but those other components you mentioned as well, contractors have been a limitation ever since I've been in the development office. We just don't have six contractors bidding on every project. They can only do, and, and the contractors who are participating can only do so many at a time. So there's that component. And eventually, you know, when you say a year's waiting list, yeah, there is a substantial waiting list. I don't know. Nobody could know how many on that waiting list we could serve with the funds we have available. I mean, you'd have to go through each project one at a time. So, you know, and, and so all three of those aspects that you just mentioned play a role in, in that backlog. But most pressing is just that staff time.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Sorry to come back to this. So I am, that's where, kind of where my question came from, from the 18, the question I had for you about 1920 versus 1819. The form I'm looking at here shows 1.9 million in CDBG Single Family Owner Occupied Rehab Programs for 1819. But the amend, the one we're looking at for 1920 only has 1.5, so that's a difference of $400,000. And it's not just that line item that's on this form. Acquisition's at $1,000, and then in the proposal, it's at $100,000. So it's not entirely, maybe I'm looking at something that's not accurate, but it's not reflective of a flat budget necessarily.
No, it's not. As I said, there's different components. Part of this, part of this document you're looking at is flat. That's the, our, our carryover, if you, our, I shouldn't use that word, our guess, if you will, that HUD is going to give us the exact same amount of dollars in the next budget year as they did the last one. What's different in this document you're looking at is our estimate of program income. That's how much money that we bring in. You know, we, we invest money, but sometimes those projects we invest money in, we get money back from them, house sells or something like that. We bring in a little bit of money almost every day, just, just, just a little bit here and there. So our estimate of, of program income changed, and then our estimate of previous year's unspent dollars changes as well. And, and, what was I going to say? Then within these categories, there's been some changes. You can see the CDBG rental rehab program has more money in it than it has in years past.
I can't see that, actually.
It's in the very next category. So if you're, you're looking at single-family owner, if you go, if you just look down CDBG rental rehab, where it's 380, and I can't remember what it was last year, but it was last year.
That's my point, is I can't see what it was last year, so I'm trying to understand the difference.
Okay. Well, I'd be happy to, and you make a good point, then. I don't have it with me.
No, that's fine.
But I'd be happy to provide you last year's final summary.
Maybe it's a conflation happening during the same budget process, but typically, we see last year's budget, this year's budget, and the change, so we can understand the direction.
And you will, when you look at the actual budget. But this is the planning, this is, if you will, the planning doc.
Okay.
This is, this is the action plan.
Jump in the gun here a little bit. We appreciate it.
It's confusing. It confuses me every day.
Thanks.
Are there any more questions on the Community Development Block Grant? Yes, Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that frankly, I'm really happy to see this acquisition category. We have a lot of blight that needs to be eliminated. I wish we could have three times as much money in here. So if we have to rob Peter a little bit to pay Paul, I think it's just as important as the rehab of, of ownership.
Any other questions? What we'd need at this time is a motion to set the public hearing for April 22nd. Vice President Spatafor?
I move to set the public hearing for the CDBG Annual Action Plan Grant for 2019-20 for April 22nd at 7:00 PM.
All right. We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. Same sign. Let's go back for the approval of the minutes for March 25th. Do we, Councilmember Spata, Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I move the minutes from March, Committee of the Whole Meeting from March 25th, 2019.
I have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose. That takes us to the Budget General Overview, Fees, Revenues, and Frenches. And I believe the document that we have is this one, is that correct?
That's correct.
Angie, it is the, does everyone have this one in front of you? All right, Angie, it is up to you.
Okay. Good evening. So the mayor presented the fiscal year 2020 budget on March 25th. We're talking about the fiscal year that will begin July 1st of this year, July 1st of 2019, and will span until June 30th of 2020. So this is the beginning of the, of the budget hearings. The budget has been presented, and now it's, now we go, we go through budget hearings to basically come up to the point in May where Council adopts the, the budget. So after consideration of the proposed budget. Now, in the ensuing weeks, including tonight, we start department-by-department basis for reviewing the budget. So my overview right now is going to be to look at the budget as a whole, to look at the highlights of the budget, and to discuss some items that sort of transcend different areas of the budget as opposed to the department-by-department view. I, I do want to note that the budget document is available on our city website at www.lanscmi.gov. The finance webpage, and then there's accounting budget is where it is located. So the fiscal year 2020 budget is a, the overall budget for the city is $226.4 million. It's a 2.8% increase from the current year's budget that we're in right now as, as adopted. The general fund, which is our largest fund of, of, of the, of, component of that, I should say, is $139.5 million. And that represents a 3.9% increase from the current fiscal year. So to review, I know the mayor talked about the budgetary highlights a bit when he proposed the budget, but I'm going to review those as well again to, to keep us all in, in view of the overall budget. For public safety, so public safety, there's some key areas in the budget that, that have some new initiatives in them. The public safety area, we have an addition of one community police officer. That's obviously to continue promotion of proactive policing, and that will increase the current component of community policing officers from 10 to 11.
I'm going to interrupt you very quickly. The different information that Angie's providing now, such as community police officers, if we're talking fire department, all of those should be discussed when those departments are here. This is just a quick overview of it, and then we will dive into these when we get to the departments. As Angie talks about the revenues and fees, those are some things that we can delve into when she gets to that point. Thank you. Go ahead, Angie.
Correct, yes. This is meant to be an overview of the entire budget, because, yeah, it will be broken down by department, by department after this week, and so this is to get an overview of, of the whole budget. Parking enforcement will be changing from Economic Development and Planning Department to the Police Department. Actually, I'm sorry, the other way around, from the Police, Police Department to Economic Development Planning. In doing so, that frees up a half, basically approximately a half a sergeant's time for oversight of that enforcement activities. The 2020 budget also proposes reinstatement of the Police Athletic or PAL program, and as well as a graduate-level crime analyst internship, establishing that in conjunction with Michigan State University. And that's to be able to promote crime analysis coming into the city and have, and have those skills, especially with Michigan MSU located so close to us. On page, I'm sorry, slide number three, continuing with public safety, we have co-location of the city's special operations unit, the tri-county metro unit, and the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agencies. They currently work closely together, and we have a team that works closely together, but this will actually co-locate them as a team into the Hill Center, which obviously, for, for team, team purposes, will be very beneficial. We have a, some, some great needs in terms of fire protection, turnout gear. This is what firefighters wear for, in terms of fire protection. And that needs to be replaced, a good number of turnout gear needs to be replaced, so that, so the budget includes that, as well as fire records management system replacement, as well as laptops and tablets for both Police Department and the, and the Fire Department. And the budget also proposes a purchase of, of an ambulance, a new ambulance. And that's to, because of our aging fleet and the, and the high, high intensity miles that our ambulances get. For infrastructure and equipment, this, this current budget that is being proposed is, basically has a $4.5 million allocated for, for major street and bridge work. That's a $2.5 million increase from the current year, and that will be matched by about $2.3 million from the Federal Surface Transportation Program. There's $2.8 million proposed for local street repairs. That's a $300,000 increase from the current year, as well as $500,000 for new sidewalks and trailways, $300,000 for sidewalk repairs, and we're continuing, obviously, with the, the combined sewer overflow separations. So there's almost a million dollars allocated in our sewer fund towards the, the next phase of that. That will mostly take place in the Colonial Village area proposed, and then, and actually, that is for design and engineering that will take place in, in a future year. Uh that will take place in, in a future year. For infrastructure and equipment on page, uh I'm sorry, slide number five, uh continuing with that, we have you've heard that, you have the mayor talk about an announcement that the city will be a leader in the state in terms of renewal, renewable energy for our city facilities. So there's money allocated for that to go a hundred percent uh renewable energy for our, for our facility, uh facility energy. And then also the uh budget uh contains one point nine million dollars for uh vehicles and equipments. That includes the, the ambulance that I talked about, but we have, with our aging fleet stock, we have continuing needs and backlog of fleet and, and making our headway in replacing, replacing that as needed. On slide number six, excuse me, for under neighborhoods and economic development. Uh we have addition of one code compliance officer for rental inspections. Uh that increases our code compliance complement from nine, uh code compliance officers to ten. And that's in addition to our existing four premise offers, officers that we have. The budget also proposes addition of a planning zoning office, uh office position, uh very much needed with the increased workload that that area has had. As well as some succession planning needs uh for future years. And it, as well as a new position for serve Lansing initiative, this is initiative to uh connect our neighborhoods with our um volunteering opportunities. This will be in conjunction with Michigan State University, United Way, Board of Water and Light and Red Cross. And that position will be housing the neighborhood uh incident engagement department and uh will facilitate collaboration and opportunities for our, for our residents for, for that. The, uh, the budget also proposes a twenty five thousand dollar increase uh to both our business facade program as well as our arts grant program. Moving to slide number seven, did anybody have any questions probably before I move on? I should probably pause and ask that question. Okay. And I do apologize, I'm feeling a little under the weather tonight, so I'm kind of, yeah, I'm sorry about that, but I'm, I'm a little off my game here. On, on slide number seven, uh we have a, basically sort of the traditional view of our budget. So this is a department by department uh pie chart uh showing as the budget as a whole. So this includes all of our different funds, our general fund, as well as our sewer fund, our parking fund, all the different funds that we have. Uh that's, that's, uh, that is a display of that because when we turn to the next page, you'll see it's a, it's a, it's a different presentation. Uh because public service, you'll see, takes a much larger portion on slide number seven, the first slide, because that incorporates our, our, like I said, our, uh, our sewer system is, is a large part of that, our, our trash recycling. When we turn to page eight or slide number eight, the, um, you'll see that that's a smaller component because in, in the general fund, uh those components aren't, aren't in there. So that's the, that's the department by department view, so to speak, and that's how the budget, uh, the, the budget hearings are, are scheduled. But something that is, is new for this year is a programmatic budget, budget display that the mayor talked about. Uh starting on page number nine, uh we, is a view of our services that we provide, our programs, all the various programs. And, and basically the cost of those programs, the cost attributed to those programs. So where the, uh, where the difference is going to be in, in, in that, uh, with these displays, we've grouped them into four different care, categories. Uh we have public safety and recreation pro, and recreation and culture, community development and general government. I'll go through each of those as, as we go on these slides. But it's taking, instead of just talking about overall funding for the department, um first, for public safety, for example, we have things like annual compliance testing that has to happen, emergency medical services. So this is a way to communicate and break out how much is spent on each of those various programs. Again, we group those in categories because in some cases, our services actually transcend departments and then across departments. So we've grouped them together into like categories.
Angie, and instead of going through this section, I'm, I'm looking at the clock and, and time. We have allocated about a half hour for um economic development and a half hour for um the um fire department. And so if we could get into the revenue numbers, um I think that would be good. And then if we need to swing back to this at another, at another time, we can do that as well.
Okay, I can do that. I just want to note that we will be um moving then from this programmatic display. This coming year through the, through the year, uh we will be moving to a priority based budget. So using these, uh services, we'll be evaluating those, fine tuning those as we move to a, to a, I'm sorry, a priority based budget. So on slide number fourteen, so those ensuing slides were, there were several slides there that broke out those different areas that I talked about and the programs to display those. On slide number fourteen, um is a different view of the budget, uh rather than department by department or a pro, programmatic view. This is a view to say, okay, so we are, we spend our money on different types of costs, some are personnel, some are operating. And what does that breakout look like? Uh so slide number fourteen presents that both for the general fund on the, on the right side and all, all funds uh citywide on the left-hand side. You can see that wages and fringe benefits make up the, the vast majority of our costs and that is the, because we are a service oriented agency. We, we provide services using uh employees, so therefore uh they are the, uh, the, the largest component. But as we get into the ensuing graphs, we need to keep in mind uh the cost drivers behind the budgets uh as, in comparison to our revenues.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Thanks, Madam President. Um Angie, you were here a few months ago, um and I asked about the fringe benefits. So when you come back with us for, to talk about fringe, um I'd like to know the percentage of our, like, what percentage of our employees um factored in cost go toward pension. So I know, like in certain, in certain organizations, you can say twenty six percent of payroll pays for retirement. What, what is the percentage here that we factor in sort of above and beyond payroll to, you know, to allocate towards the pension system? I'm curious about that.
Okay, okay. And, and there are two components of that. So there's a component that is attributable to the employee, the active employee, as well as those that, that's more attributed to the, to the.
Retirees and active employees and probably throw in their O P E B as well.
Yeah, yep.
All in. Thank you.
Okay. So as I was mentioning, um in terms of the cost drivers, then when we go to slide fifteen, keeping in mind that uh wages and fringe benefits are, are very large components of the budget. Thirty one percent uh on a citywide basis uh for fringe benefits, uh thirty seven percent on uh for the uh general fund. Two of the main drivers are our, our pension and retiree health costs. And page fifteen displays the increases that we have seen and that we continue to see. And one of the challenges in this current year budget, um you'll see that, uh, the red line there is our pension cost. Uh we expected that to go up by about, uh, about a million dollars, close to a million dollars this year. Uh it went up by two point three million dollars, one point three, uh three million dollars more than expected. And that had to do with the stock market decline that occurred in December. Now, of course, the market regained, but because it, that happened in December, uh that did cause a spike. Uh that, that is a spike that is a part of a five-year phasen uh of, of that loss. So to the extent that there's a gain, there'll be a five-year gain that will be phased in, but it did, did result in an increase uh in our pension costs this next year for a million dollars, which obviously is a, is a challenge, keeping in mind that there was already expected to be a million dollar increase. Now, I mentioned those things because as we've talked about before, these are our challenges that we have uh when we look at that in terms of what I'm going to go over now with, with our revenues and our revenue constraints. Now, property tax revenues, uh what this chart on page seven, or uh slide number seventeen displays is this is showing uh the, the dark, uh, the dark bars there represent the property tax losses that we saw during the, the Great Recession uh with the market decline. The light bars that you see starting in two thousand two, fiscal year thirteen, uh is the formal increase that was uh passed for police, fire and, and roads to supplement and to uh, and, and to mitigate further reductions that would have had to occur had that, had those not, uh, that formal increase not been um approved. And it, one of the main things to take from this graph uh is that basically, that when, when you look at our, our budget today, today, basically two thousand nineteen, our current fiscal year that we're in right now, we have finally, with the four mills, have finally gotten to the level that we were in two thousand ten before the, the, the housing market uh crash. So um that is a, that is a very slow, as you can see from the bottom, uh the dark, the dark parts of the graph. It is a very slow climb of that original fifteen point four four mills without those additional four mills um in terms of, of the climb back up. And that's due to the property tax uh constraints that, that we have in the state, uh Headley and Proposal A, which limit the amount by which property taxes can grow regardless of the value. So for this current year, actually, the very good news is that we saw a lot of growth uh in our property values. From a state equalized value, which is the, the values of the properties, uh we, we actually saw a nine percent increase, which is tremendous. We haven't seen that since before the uh Great Recession. And but because of the uh constraints uh by the state, uh we, basically our property tax revenues uh could only increase by close to five percent. Because we, because we cannot recognize that full nine percent uh because, because of those property tax limitations. Uh we saw seven point five percent increase in residential properties, a fourteen percent increase in commercial properties. And our industrial properties uh values were about flat for, for this coming year. So that is very good news, but again, it, it does show some of our challenges in terms of our continued uh outlook in terms of our revenue growth. And we, and we have not seen that, and like I said, since, since the grace, the beginning of the Great Recession. Our income tax revenues are displayed on page eighteen as, as projected. Um we've talked before that uh it's starting this past January, uh East Lansing instituted an, an income tax that will affect us. Uh and that is obvi, obviously reflected in our projections for fiscal year two thousand twenty. Now, I, I do want to uh just caution that income tax revenues are uh very subject to economic downturns. So that is something that we watch caution, we, we wash, watch with caution in terms of uh our economic forecasts. On page nineteen, when I talked about our road funding, um you, you can see that, that we've had uh the passage of the legislation from the state a couple of years ago has definitely helped in that realm. Uh you can see the increase from about fiscal year sixteen to two thousand fiscal year twenty in what's proposed uh for, for the new year. Uh this year, this current year, it's noted that we had a one point six, uh, one point six million dollar supplemental appropriation from the state, uh which spiked that number a bit. So in terms of those road dollars that I talked about, that, that is, uh, that is certainly helping us in that area. That is contingent, however, on the state uh continuing to see general fund revenue growth though.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. Maybe way out of left field, do you have any idea what the revised road funding proposal in the legislative right now would do for Lansing's revenue?
I don't, I don't have an estimate.
Thank you.
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, in terms of overview of the impact of what we're talking about, um now focusing back on the general fund, not so much the overall uh budget. On the general fund, we look at having uh adequate reserves in terms of either uh economic downturn or an unexpected and unanticipated event happen. Um and we look, and we've talked before about a budget target policy of fifteen percent uh of our reserves, being fifteen percent of our uh general fund operating expenditures. And so uh we are projecting to have our reserves of about eighteen million dollars at the end of, uh, at, at the end of both this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. Uh the fiscal year two thousand twenty budget is a, is a balanced budget, uh basically revenues uh equalling expenditures. So you see a slight decrease there on, in a, on a percentage basis. That's only because the budget is going up in terms of, of the total dollars going up with the same uh reserve level, uh which results in a, in a slight decrease in the percentage. But those, but we are getting, we are, definitely make, have made a great, great headway in terms of the, gaining to where we need to be for our reserve levels, especially in anticipation of a possible economic downturn. In terms of overall uh overview as well, there are some, some fee changes that are proposed for the coming year. Um on pages one thirty three through one thirty five of the budget document, uh there are some fee changes for parks and recreation uh under sports and leisure, as well as some cemetery changes. Uh we have economic development and uh parking, uh, the parking fund has some proposed fee changes. Uh in public service, uh some major street fund changes uh related to cell tower and cell uh reception. And then our recycling as well as refuse and sewer funds. So those are uh things that will be uh reviewed with each department as they uh present their budgets in the, uh, in the coming weeks here.
Okay, uh couple of questions that I have for you and we'll open it up for other council members. And looking, and, and you talked briefly about the property tax um increase in, in property tax. Have we checked with the assessor to determine, we realize that these are uncapped properties that have been sold. What is um the amount of sales that we're seeing in the Lansing area? Do, do we have any idea?
The number of sales or?
Yes.
Oh, I, I do not have the number of sales. I can, I can.
Can you get that number for us, please? And I think I'd like to see a trend. If, if we could see a trend for the last three years of um property sales, um I think that would be beneficial. Then on um the income tax, what is the amount um that um is projected that our, our income tax is being reduced by with consideration of East Lansing's um tax? Do you have a number on that?
Yes, uh somewhere between seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars annually.
All right. And our um payment in lieu of equity with the um Board of Water and Light. Is that um coming in about as projected for the current year that we're in? And what are our increases for the next year?
The amount for that. Pull that. And something I want to mention, the Board of Water and Light has had some rate increases as you're aware. But uh we do continue and they continue to see uh with, with energy efficiencies, that not all of that uh results in an increase in, in revenue. And our, our uh return on equity from the Board of Water and Light is based on gross revenues.
Correct.
So the uh return on equity.
And that is on page eight of nine?
So on the accounting level detail, yep, on the accounting level detail, uh that was distributed for the general fund revenues, that is on page eight of nine. Uh we uh are projecting a slight decrease in the amount that was, um, from what was budgeted uh for the current year. And then you'll see that there is a uh increase in the amount budgeted for, uh, for next year of, of about nine hundred thousand.
And I guess my question would be to Jim at this point, um how, um, one was the what is the length of our agreement currently with the Board of Water and Light on return on equity?
I don't have that in front of me, but I recall that you had it before you two years ago, I think it is. And I don't remember if, what the term of it is right now.
I believe there's another year.
Another year. It may have been three years. We just had this up la, is it last year or year before last?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was last year and I think, so I think we have this coming year as well as one more year in addition to that.
Could, could you get us the, the information on, on that? I would appreciate that. And based on some of the conversations on the court consolidation, is this budget um revenues, is any of this projected on the potential of uh court consolidation or is this based on status quo?
This is based on status quo.
Okay. Are there other questions on revenues? Vice President Spatafor.
Which document are we looking at that's got the Board of Water and Light equity payment in it?
Okay, you should have had a line item and it should have been sent to you as well. Um a line item on revenues. It's one of nine. And um that lists all the revenues from.
Got it.
Do you got it?
Yep.
Okay, and that is on page eight of nine. And it is um almost in the middle. It's after interest and rents and it's return on equity.
Found it.
Okay? Other questions? Um I guess my other question would be then on um looking at the. I guess my other question would be then on looking at the revenues that have been projected for our constitutional and statutory from the state. You're projecting some small increases in those?
Yes, correct. Those are projections that come from the state, and that is reflecting the governor's proposal to increase the statutory portion of revenue sharing. So that's the first, that's the first time we've seen that. Now, that of course is contingent on legislative approval. That is the first time we've seen an increase proposed for the statutory portion of revenue sharing, which is good news.
And I see almost a double in the fire protection dollars?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. I don't know why I neglected to mention that. So legislation that was passed changed that. The personal property tax reimbursement, so when the personal property tax was phased out, or is in the process of being phased out, the monies that were set aside, or are collected by the state, I guess I should say, have been in excess of the amount that had been levied. And so that amount has been shared back with the municipalities. However, a change was legislated this past December, I want to say, which basically changed that mix because they realized that those numbers were garnering more than anticipated. And the state now has instituted where there is full funding of our fire protection grant, which is something we have not seen at all. And this is full funding. When it first came out, I thought maybe it was just an increase in funding, but this is full funding of it. So you see a substantial increase in our fire protection, which is very good news. Yes, and I absolutely neglected mentioning that, I apologize.
But that stays in the Fire Department?
That is, so yes, that is funding fire, part of what funds the Fire Department, as well as tax dollars, as well as the millage dollars, the special millage dollars, yes.
But we have, of course, as you were talking about, personal property tax, we have a huge decrease in what we were getting to what we are projected to get, which is seven hundred thousand, and that went into the general fund.
Yes, so that is that allocation that I was talking about. Now, we could still see some additional monies from the personal property tax reimbursements from the state, but to budget that would be a little on the optimistic, quite a bit on the optimistic side. That funding was shifted so that the fire protection grants would be fully funded, which was good news for our type of community, for our community, because not all communities are fire protection communities in the state, so that was actually very good news for us. So yes, we do anticipate seeing a decrease in the personal property tax reimbursement. What we were seeing was because they were allocating an additional amount, what we could only really rely on is the amount you're seeing. So even though you see a decrease there, that decrease could have happened anyway. The good news was that they reallocated that money to fire protection where we will see it.
Yeah, I get that, and I appreciate that. But we are seeing, it appears that we were going to have at the end of this year, two hundred, or two hundred, two million five hundred and fifty-four thousand, and we're going to be looking at seven hundred thousand.
Correct.
Okay, just so that we're aware of that. Are there, Councilmember Washington?
Just really quickly, as I was going over this this weekend, I did notice that we had quite an uptick in charges for services dash co-compliance, and I, or, I'm sorry.
Charge for.
Okay, here it is. It's business licenses. So this, we had like.
And that's on page two of nine.
Yeah, two of nine. And we went from two hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred to six oh to eight hundred, and I noticed we had a three hundred thousand, eight, three hundred, eight thousand, five hundred dollar uptick in medical marijuana licenses. Do I remember correctly that we couldn't charge more for those licenses than what it was going to cost us? Because when I went to the administrative fees, the administration fees for these, it was like, off the top of my head, I'm thinking two hundred and fourteen thousand. So I'm wondering where the rest of it is being figured in? Or am I wrong that we can charge more?
So, yes, so we can only charge, we can charge what we, what basically the amount costs. The state cap on that is five thousand, and we pay basically in excess, the costs basically are in excess of that amount, so we charge the five thousand dollars per license. So we are within the realm of what our ability to collect that. And then this is then projecting the amounts for the growth, the growth, the distribution, the testing facilities, as well as the dispensary facilities that are, that we know about at this point.
So even though our budget shows, I believe it was two hundred and fourteen thousand to administer these licenses, we can still collect five hundred thousand?
When you say that it shows that we, to administer that, that's located in various departments. So we have the Attorney's Office, we have the Police Department, we have a number of different departments where those charges all take place. So when you talk about that amount.
And that was my question.
Councilmember Washington, I think, I think what this number is reflecting is the fact that there's no caps on growth facilities, there's no caps on processors, there's no caps. So this is additional revenue that they expect to receive based on more licenses going out.
Right, and their projection was also two hundred and fourteen thousand to administer those. But my question is this, are those specifically outlined as expenses in the departments, or is it absorbed in like inspection and city attorney and just generally? That's what I meant.
Yes, yes, and I apologize. So you're referring to the programmatic costs there. That is a breakout of our, that is displayed in our, what we call our general government, which is our, sort of our internal services, and that's where City Attorney's Office is located, and the City Clerk's Office is located. So that's only one component of it. The other component is going to be very much in our Police Department and Fire Departments for inspections, as well as our economic development and planning. So that does only show a portion of that in that graph. I apologize, now I understand what you're asking.
I just want to make sure we're on. I think the City Attorney wanted to also weigh in.
May I address this? So, the Finance Director is correct that the state caps the fee at five thousand per year. The local ordinance adopted by this body has the five thousand dollar fee. Prior to, and if a license is not granted, twenty-five hundred of that is returned to the applicant. Prior to adopting the ordinance, excuse me, the Public Safety Committee asked for an analysis of expected administrative expenses that would be expended by the city in processing, enforcing licenses, and that was done through a survey, understanding at that time, the city had no experience with marijuana licensing. We were very comfortable that the five thousand dollars was supported by the administrative expenses of all the departments that the Finance Director mentioned. Just from personal observation, from the Marijuana Commission down to the review of license applications to the enormous amount of time the City Clerk's Office and the City Attorney's Office has expended, including code, building safety, there's no question in my mind that we have greatly exceeded the five thousand dollars. We are undergoing an actual study right now to see what those expenses are citywide.
Vice President Spatafor.
Two things, one you can get back to me on, I would like to, if you can, take a look at what maybe we could see under the new road funding formula, just to see what that revenue might look like if that budget gets passed this year. The last thing, I had a question on that you might not be able to answer me, and I don't really need an answer, but I'm curious, where are we getting twenty-five thousand dollars in payphone commissions from? Are people still using payphones in that?
That's actually our detention facility.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Seeing none, what we will do now is have Economic Development and Brian McGreen.
Oh, wait, if I could.
Yes.
Yes, my apologies. So in front of you, in addition to your overview, you have a couple of different budget pages, revised parking budget pages, and I apologize, I do not know how this happened, but in the budget book, it had some, I'm going to call them old numbers, it didn't, the revised numbers did not make it into the budget document, and so these are revised pages that you have on the dais in front of you that should replace the parking pages. It's two-sided so that you can basically lift out your, the budget book pages in your budget book and just replace it. So the other side of the page, so to speak, isn't changed, it's just so it's liftable. And the budget document online has been updated, if you're looking at the PDF format, so my apologies there, and to Brian as well, yeah.
Brian?
All right. Good evening, Council President Wood and council members. It is an honor for me to be here for my second budget presentation for the 2020 fiscal year. I know we're on a shortened timeframe tonight, I think I was told originally, ten to fifteen minutes for my presentation, so if I talk really fast, it's because I put a lot of stuff in here and I want to get through this, but please be sure to interrupt me if you have questions on anything I'm saying as I go through this. I did design my presentation quickly so I could give some information to the audience, both at home and here, just some information about what the Department of Economic Development and Planning does. If we could go to my second page of slides, please, page two. Fiscal year 2019 will have been the first full year of operation for the Department of Economic Development and Planning. The primary objective of the department has been to stabilize the city's economic base and, through continued planning and directed development, grow that base to a level capable of providing continuous support for the city's services and infrastructure. The department consists of six separate divisions. The Building Safety Office is operated as a special revenue fund per state law. Building Safety interacts with commercial structures in the city and ensures the safety of such structures, whether they be new, existing, or at the end of their useful life. To date, Building Safety has issued sixty-six hundred permits and done nearly ten thousand inspections in support of eighty-five million dollars of construction projects in the city. They've been pretty busy over there. Code Enforcement is charged with protecting the health, safety, and welfare of Lansing residents through the preservation and improvement of the housing stock by assuring safe, decent, and sanitary housing while conserving the integrity of neighborhoods. We currently, as of last week, list twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen units in the city as registered rentals.
Could you give us that number one more time?
Yes, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen, and I believe that was as of April fourth.
And this is multi-dwellings and single family?
That would be anything that's a registered rental, so if it's a single-family, multifamily home, or a multifamily structure, those would all count, those are units.
Thank you.
Yep. Planning has a broad role in facilitating orderly development and growth across the city. This division oversees development, implementation, and review of the city's master plan. Planning functions include comprehensive planning, site plan review, floodplain review, zoning review, historic preservation, public infrastructure, and review of economic development projects. Our Parking Services Office encompasses the operation of the municipal fee-based parking system. We enjoy providing economical parking options for downtown workers, residents, and visitors. And finally, coordination of housing and neighborhood improvement activities are primarily handled under the city's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, or various federal and state housing assistance programs. The traditional allocation of CDBG, Home, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program are federally funded programs administered by the Development Office. In addition to these programs, the Development Office administers various grants such as floodplain abatement, FEMA, lead-based paint abatement, and blight elimination hardest-hit fund programs. If we could jump to slide three. Additionally, DLI, the EDC, and LEPTFA report indirectly through the Department of EDP. I wanted to note too, just briefly, that across the board, we interact with a variety of other in-house boards and commissions, such as our Planning Board, our Trades Boards, and a variety of Appeals Boards. We also partner with a variety of other stakeholders working on planning and economic development activities in our region, such as the Land Bank, LEAP, Tri-County Planning Commission, and neighborhood-based nonprofits. Slide four, please. As we look across the variety of divisions encapsulated in EDP, we've identified a number of overarching goals for our department. I shared in 2018 this list with you. Enhanced communication, better data and metrics, quicker turnaround time, improved customer approach, and more transparency. So whether it's our response time with Code Enforcement, or the customer service windows we run in planning, building, safety, or parking, or with our general approach to our customers, we have been aiming across the board to improve the citizen experience within our functions. On slide five, I'll share that already we've been making progress towards these goals. We have been workshopping features and functions of the software that brings citizen needs to us, whether that's the reporting of code violations or the submission of building plans. We have been bringing in additional resources for training, and we will be yet this year deploying customer service training for all of our staff. We have been striving to provide information to our customers more readily, and, as the mayor likes to point out, we've been operating faster than the speed of business. I look forward to our continuing strides toward these goals as we move into fiscal year 2020. Let me turn now to running through the numbers for our variety of divisions. Let's go to slide six. EDP's overall fiscal year 2020 budget comes in around twenty-three point seven million dollars. This was, as was pointed out to me just moments ago, a large increase from 2018 for two main factors. The addition of the Code Enforcement team to our ranks, and a sizable increase in the amount of capital funds we've been able to put towards parking improvements. This year's budget will be a slight decrease from our 2019 budget in that we anticipate smaller amounts of federal funding to come Lansing's way in the next year. Slide seven. In regards to our Building Safety Special Revenue Fund, there is no significant deviation between our requested budget and the projected and actual budget figures of the past two years. In this area, we have not requested additional staffing. We will, however, be continuing to work with HR to fill open positions so that we can continue to move projects along quickly. Slide eight.
Do you know how many open positions you have?
Sure, right now, we're still in a transition place. We still are posting shortly our lead building official position. Right now, we have someone filling that position on an interim basis, which does mean we're down a building inspector at this point. And we should be resolving that in the next couple of weeks. If we could jump to slide eight. Two major projects of the sort I just mentioned are the new McLaren Hospital campus on the city's southeast side, and the new capital city market development happening downtown. Review for these projects have already begun to hit our office, and we anticipate that they, and other ones we're aware of in the pipeline, will be keeping us super busy throughout Slide nine. Our Parking Enterprise Fund represents nearly half of EDP's budget this year. We will be continuing our multi-year capital improvement plan, which is allowing us to stretch the life of the many assets we have under our control. I would point out, the large savings and debt service realized from the sale of the Townsend ramp helps to offset some of this expense. On slide ten, I wanted to include just a few pictures showing some of the work we've done this year as part of our extreme parking makeover. Our most visible work has been the repaving of several lots, notably ones downtown and on the east side. Less visible directly have been the structural work we've been deploying to our three parking structures, which will continue in the next fiscal year. In the coming year, we will also be deploying new gating and paystation technology, along with our much anticipated new metering, permitting, and ticketing issuance and payment acceptance platforms. Now that we've been able to give the right attention to these assets, we anticipate extending their lives for at least another twenty years. I would point out quickly that EDP's only fee changes this year are ones that affect the parking system. Whereas last year, we right-sized what we were charging in our ramps, this year, we adjusted our surface lot rates, and, more importantly, our fines on all of the violations that we frequently encounter. Slide eleven. Our Development Office presents one of the more challenging areas to plan for budgetarily. As you heard earlier, we have a separate federal process we have been advancing in tandem with the budget, which really serves as the way we make application to the federal government for access to all of our federal funds. These valuable resources allow us to engage in a wide variety of community improvements in low-to-moderate income areas of our community. Though these numbers are down from last year's, at this point, they are essentially placeholders as we wait to learn of just what our federal allocations will look like. Slide twelve, please. This one brings us to our overall administration, code, and planning section of our presentation. Do note, what you're looking at for personnel and operating includes not just administration, planning, and zoning, but all of Code Enforcement staffing. These numbers this year reflect the addition of a new junior-level staffing person in planning and one new Code Enforcement officer, which would bring the total number of Code Enforcement positions to ten in the coming year. These two additions will be critical to our operations in EDP, one by strengthening our Code Enforcement team, and the other by essentially increasing our planning and zoning capacity by fifty percent. The new junior planner position will be critical in helping us maintain our current workload, but also in helping us prepare for the future. You'll note that, as with last year, LEPTFA, EDC, and DLI's budget outlays all fall within EDP's budget. You'll be receiving presentations in the coming weeks on these budgets separately. Next slide. As you've seen and as you know, the folks in EDP are working hard across a variety of dimensions to provide key services to the city. of dimensions to provide key services to the city. We're going to have our hands full continuing to enforce building and housing and zoning codes, to provide adequate parking for our residents and visitors, and to provide resources to our low- and moderate-income citizens, among the many other things that we do. We're also excited about a variety of other development opportunities that we have throughout the city, whether it's talking about new developments coming to town or breathing new life into existing properties. The Department of Economic Development and Planning and I look forward to continuing to work with each of you as we continue to move Lansing forward. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Council members, if you remember in the presentation that Angie gave us on page six, there is the addition of the one code officer for rental inspections, the addition of one planning and zoning position, the $25,000 increase to business facades, as well as was indicated by Angie and Mr. McGreen, the fee changes, the fee changes that are part of the parking system. With that, are there questions? Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few questions. One is, what does a junior-level staffing person in zoning do, or in planning do?
Sure. We're gonna, should we receive a direction or certainly an indication from you all, we're gonna start laying out that job posting. I've already reached out to HR for what might have been some entry-level planning and zoning positions that we might have had in the past. As you know, planning and zoning essentially has two staff people, which is an all-time low. We're concerned about succession and transition issues down the road. We have vast amounts of workload coming through the office, again, essentially handled by two people. And so I think we're really concerned, again, should there be any situations, what we would do if we encountered a tough staffing situation. So this person, I think, will be transitioning, will be job shadowing, will be probably picking up some additional workload and learning and training for essentially the next year, and probably picking up special projects as well on the side.
Okay, so we're not talking about like a clerical position?
No, no, no. This would be somebody with a planning and zoning background.
Okay, thank you. My second question of three is, I see you're upcoming in noteworthy projects. Isn't the middle one already done?
You know, I put that one on there. You know, we continue, I continue to spend my time throughout the city. And while that project, Logan's Scribe, I believe is the picture you pointed out, has transitioned ownership, I don't think our work is done. In fact, I continue to reach out to the owners to let them know what our expectations are on that property. So I don't consider it done. I think we're still very much paying attention to things that are happening all across city. And until I think everyone's satisfied with the performance of that property, we're not done.
Yeah, 'cause not real hopeful right now. The last thing I have, Brian, is as I was going through this, and we talked about this a little bit just before the meeting, but in the revenues for the licensing and charges, I noticed that for co-compliance, the revenue you are projecting it to come in at 2.3 million, and the admin fees, I don't know, it looks to me, and tell me if this is not so, we are actually, they're bringing in almost everything to pay for themselves, are they not?
We, we project with a slight increase of, I think, I think the more folks you add, the more difficult it is for folks to, to cover what they cost. I think we're at a point right now where they can, but we do have a limited amount of rental housing to be generating fees out of. So I think as we've looked at the numbers, we're convinced that this, an addition of one will pay for itself. I don't know that that would continue if we were to increase by five, or 10, or 15.
Okay, so actually, co-compliance at this point is a wash. I mean, they're pretty much bringing in what they need to, to take care of themselves. And I mean, we have, you know, trash fees, debris fees, we have all of that other stuff to go with co-compliance. And I guess, to be real frank, to get the city cleaned up, I don't know that I necessarily think they have to totally pay for themselves. I just think that folks should know that at this point they do. Thank you.
Are there other questions on code compliance? Councilmember Hussein?
Brian, we were told that as part of this presentation, you would have numbers historically, whether it be the past 10 years, 15, 20, a number of rentals in the city of Lansing, in addition to the number of code officers that were budgeted for those respective years. Do you have that?
Actually, that second part of your question, I do not. I wasn't asked that one. But asking about the number of rental housing over the past number of years I've looked into, it was actually more challenging to pull numbers than I would have thought. It's really easy for us to do a point in time, but we've had to look back at some historic documents for other numbers. I can find from 2012, we had about 33,000 registered units. I wasn't easily able to pull numbers from before that. Again, that's in comparison to about 30,000 that we have right now. And so that was an interesting figure to me. I was, and from what I've learned from my staff, the number does fluctuate. We tend to add about 500 new rental properties a year. Single-family is about 2 to 275 of that as a trend. But what we've been doing too, and I was checking into this today, in fact, we've been doing a lot of scrubbing with one of our administrative staffers. We've been going through and trying to actually clear our records and say, is this still a rental? Does it still exist? We've had a number of foreclosures over the past decade, so were those rentals, have they disappeared? So we've been exploring these numbers. So it's been difficult to get numbers, so I think what I'm presenting to you is what I have, but we're going to continue to dig into this. Do know that we're monitoring, we're keeping up on these things. The supply does seem to fluctuate up and down, but I would say again, we have about 30,000 today. In 2012, we had about 33,000.
Vice President Spatafor?
Brian, thank you for that information. Is that about, what's that in a percentage of owner-occupied versus rental? I might have been reading something.
I'm sorry, that is registered rental units, that number that we have. We have somewhere around, I think, about 55,000 dwelling units in the city. Don't quote me on that one, I need to verify that, but the numbers I presented to you were just the registered rental units, so those are not owner-occupied. Those are either single-family homes that are fully rented, or maybe multi, or maybe duplexes, triplexes, and then of course, multifamily buildings.
Okay.
Could you get us the number of units, single-family units that we have in the city?
Sure.
And then the number of single-family rentals that we currently have in the city? Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could get us the current number of single-family houses we have, and then the current number of single-family rentals we have in the city as well?
Yes, yes. So what I can do too, and in fact, the Census Bureau publishes, I believe, annual updates. They may be about a year behind, but I was, I was looking at that information and I neglected to print that one. But I'll be happy to pull that out. It's great information on sort of the status of housing, you know, age of housing, number of units, rental proportion, they've deduced, but I could send that information over to you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hussein?
Can you tell me what the turnaround time is right now roughly for, I should say, between application and rental inspection?
It's not great. We are probably on about a two-to-three-month waiting list. And I wouldn't call it a waiting list. If somebody were to come in with a brand-new rental, or maybe a renewal, if they schedule an appointment, it probably will take us, depending on the area, about unfortunately two months to get to.
I think that's actually down from six months at one point, correct? So that's actually an improvement?
It is down, but that means that we have somebody that's rented a unit, you know, that could have rented a unit and be in it, and it could be unsafe. Other questions? Councilmember Denver?
Thank you. Is there a way to track what has been on the rental registry list and come off that list in the last year or two?
I can see if I can get that number. I mean, once, once they close out, they close out, I can see if I can get that information. Like, are you trying to say, you know, what we've purged, what's been removed?
Yeah, well, part, this is sort of a question that needs the process. So when we were working on land contract issues, we were finding a lot of folks that were converting their tenants over to land contracts so that they didn't have to pay the rental inspection fees, but then were transferring all the liability for maintenance and everything to the tenant, who was usually unaware, many times didn't speak good English, and then pulling the properties back and re-renting them out, and there was title issues. Like, is there a way for you to work, since you've got somebody doing purging, to like work with the assessor's office to see how you can make your databases communicate better to track that kind of thing?
Sure, sure. And I can tell you too, I mean, when we come across these, our process right now is if something is in the rental silent, if it's been a rental, we send a letter out for renewal. If we don't hear back, we send out failure to register letters. So we have a process. Eventually, somebody will reach out to us and say, gosh, I sold that. I sold that, that's not mine. We usually then spend some time exploring with that person, just sort of that situation. Was it a transfer that you described? I will tell you, sometimes it is just actually a sale. I was dealing with one last week where we had started a rental registration process, the person sold it, we had to continue and close that case out. But in that case, it was legitimate sale. But we do, at that point, have an opportunity to ask those questions. Was this, you know, what was this? Was this really transferred? What's going on? So I'll see if I can pull some information on what's left, but I can tell you, we do explore when these things leave the rental registry why they're leaving.
Are there other questions? I have a few for you. You had indicated that, and I just want to make sure that I understood correctly, that the new code officer that you're proposing, that the revenue that they will be collecting will pay for the personnel, does that include equipment, cars, the car, everything, or is it just the personnel?
We, we estimate that for a Code Enforcement officer, the full cost for a year is about $100,000. That would be salary, fringe, car, uniform, all of that. We estimate it's about $100,000. So yes, we've, we've shown figures, we've had some conversations to make sure that that is something that can be covered by the increased activity. And as we talked about, you know, we are behind on inspecting homes. We have, we do have a limited supply, so I think there's still a ceiling that we would get to, but we think in this case that this position would cover its own costs.
Is there anything being done in the office that is looking at BSNA for addresses of, under taxpayer or owner, that are not Lansing and then showing zero and homestead, but aren't registered rentals? Are you doing anything on a regular basis to coordinate those efforts?
Lynn Puente and my staff does a really great job. Of course, she doesn't catch everything, there's, there's stuff out there still, but yes, we do look into some of those things. And I'll tell you, too, you know, we've come across some too, where we've started exploring them, they're showing no homestead exemption, they're not registered. We explore them, sometimes somebody's working out of home and flipping it, sometimes it isn't a registered rental. So we do explore, you know, we, well, I don't want to give away all of our tactics for where we come across some of this information, but we absolutely do follow up on situations like that and others that we come across to make sure that people are playing by the rules.
The council provided funding for a corridor inspector. A corridor inspector was supposed to be working on the corridors and the, and the major businesses within that. Where are we with that particular code officer? How long, if they are employed, how long have they been employed? And what are they seeing in the corridors?
Sure. Ma'am, this, this certainly has not been an area of pride. We loved the idea of that position. We had prepared for it last, I believe, June, we had the job posting ready to go. We posted in August. We weren't happy with the first batch of folks that, that came in. We extended the deadline. It's been a series of things that we've been sort of learning as we've gone through. We got to December, we were, we hit another roadblock. We finally did interviews early this calendar year. At the last moment, an internal candidate came forth. We subsequently hired that internal candidate. We have selected that internal candidate, and that internal candidate will be starting shortly. He's been offered the job, he's accepted, he is one of my folks in Code Enforcement. We will be bringing him over and devoting him solely towards commercial Code Enforcement here shortly.
Okay. When that happens, please get the councilmembers the name and contact information, because I know we have, a number of us have complaints that we would like the opportunity for that inspector to take a look at.
Absolutely, ma'am. I hope to bring him by your, one of your committee meetings here shortly. I think you'll be pleased with the selection. He's excited about the opportunity, and we're going to be putting him to work pretty soon.
But then that means that you're going to have an inspector's position open.
The, the nice coincidence in this is we had a retirement in January, so we actually already were going through a Code Enforcement hiring process. So instead of hiring one, we'll be hiring two. And should you, again, approve the budget with the addition of this Code Enforcement person, we'll be putting a third one in the wings.
In your Building Safety Special Revenue Fund, I, I just wanted to take a quick look at the increase in the telephone charges that went up to 15, went up $15,000. Is, is that something you could take a look at and see whether that is an error or whether there's an issue out there that we're not aware of?
I don't believe it's an error. I think the charges had previously been coming out of a different department. I think they were coming out of my core admin, so those were moved from planning and zoning over to building safety.
Okay. And then with the facade grants program that was funded, was all that funding utilized, or will it be utilized by the end of this fiscal year?
I believe it's all been committed. I looked to Angie to nod her head. I believe when LEAP comes in to present on the EDC budget, they'll be updating you on that. I believe it's all been committed.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions at this time? The one last one that I do have is, I have heard from constituents that are concerned about the new parking meters downtown. And, and the concern is that there are seniors, as well as those that are on limited incomes that do not have credit cards or debit cards. And making that something that has to be utilized on those means it prohibits them from being able to park. So is there an opportunity, or is the mechanism that's down there, can it also take money?
I believe so. Let me get you information on the pay stations that are going to be deployed.
If you, if you would check on that, I would appreciate it. Councilmember Spatafor?
When the Director of Parking Services presented a public service last year, that question came up, and the stations will be, will take currency still.
Okay.
They just won't take the key thing.
Yeah. The key, the keys are done, right? And I'm not sure, I don't know if these will be taking change, but let me verify.
All right.
But I think they do, right? They do take.
They take bills.
Right.
All right, thank you. So the one thing that I will be asking each department, if you could get back with us, of your divisions, I want to know of any vacancies that you have in those divisions and where you are in the hiring process with those vacancies.
Would you like me to continue to address that now or provide that in follow-up?
If you could provide that with follow-up, that'd be great.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the Fire Department. May the Fire Department would please come down at this time. Just so that everyone is aware, we will probably run over into the council meeting with the Fire Department, but we will complete the Fire Department before we go into the council meeting. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Michael Mackey. I'm the new fire chief. I came in last week, so for this presentation, I'm going to really rely on Chief Tobin. So, okay.
Welcome, and we thank you for being part of our Lansing family now. And with that, Michael?
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Lansing City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to present the budget for the City of Lansing Fire Department for fiscal year 2020. To make life easy, we've now got to the point where we have two chiefs, the bull's first name is Mike or Michael, so it's easy to remember for everyone that has to have any questions. Right into slide number two. We at the Lansing Fire Department exist because of the citizens of this city. Back in 1857, a group of citizens identified this growing city did not have the resources to fight fire, which was a big threat back then. They met on October 5th across the street in the Senate chambers and decided to form the Lansing Fire Department. For more than 150 years, this Fire Department has provided service to the citizens to the citizens of this city, have been supported by the citizens, both by their generous tax dollars and also by their direct support through volunteer programs like our CERT program, RACI's, Box 23, and even through continued support on direct activity, as I demonstrate on slide three of our fire council, excuse me, our fire board commissioners. Our fire board commissioners is the voice of the people with the Lansing Fire Department. They continue to be very active with us, and we are very happy that they are. Lansing Fire Department, slide number four, continues to get busy as the time goes on. The slide here shows a 10-year history of our call volume. Back in 2008, we were running as a department just over 16,000 responses a year. In 2018, we completed with 22,200 responses. Why is that 10-year line important? In that 10-year period, the Lansing Fire Department has gone from a staff of over 220 firefighters out of nine stations, 10 engine companies, four ladder companies, four medic units, and two battalion chiefs, along with additional support services. Our call volume in that 10-year period has gone up by 10,000 responses. We are now doing that with 13 less firefighters a day, four less engine companies a day, two less truck companies a day, and one less battalion chief a day. We average 61 calls a day coming out of our stations. Our busiest ambulance out of Fire Station One last year responded to more than 5,000 EMS requests. That's one ambulance. The national average should put that ambulance down in the neighborhood of about 3,200 responses a year for distribution of equipment and personnel. So our personnel work extremely hard on the 24-hour shifts that they're there. The line below that one for the fire trends is our EMS trend. As you can see, that continues to be trending upwards. That goes with numerous aspects of our community, an aging community, changing in the healthcare system, some parts of our community, that's the only access they have to health care is through our ambulances. So some of the programs that we're going to talk about as our budget and also our vision with this department going forward will help adjust with some of those numbers. The bottom line is the actual numbers of fires that we run on. It's both good and bad for a fire department when you see a flat trend on fires. The good part about it, that means our community is staying safe. We're still running approximately 18 fires, excuse me, a fire every 18 hours within this community. The good number is that the number of structure fires of actual, when the full building is involved, is going down. So that makes up a smaller portion of that number. The difficulty is the fire department and assistant fire chief sitting in front of you is when I'm trying to justify the existence of a fire department, having multi-half million and million dollar apparatus on the road, those numbers are tough to justify at times, very honestly. The fire department is this community's insurance policy. We are there when called. We will put apparatus, whether it be an ambulance, a fire truck, or a full structure assignment on the scene in this city in less than four and a half minutes. We will hit a structure fire with 23 personnel. The reason why we don't have large fires in this city is because we have resources that get there and overwhelm the fire. Now, I'm not saying that we're adequate where we need to be because the difficulty is we can hit one fire, but when that second call comes in, I have eight people in this city to respond to that second call. Then we have to start relying on our neighbors. So I'm not trying to scare you. I'm just being honest with our trend. We continue to grow. That's a big number, 22,000 responses. How do we make up to other communities? Slide number five. If you look at similar-sized communities, the city of Ann Arbor, they run out of five fire stations. We run out of six. They do about 7,500 responses a year. They do not do EMS transport. We do. But they're still doing EMS first response for a little over 4,200 calls. Our neighbors in East Lansing, they're doing 5,200. And if you look all the way down, Grand Rapids, 22,289 calls last year for 2018. That's only a handful more than we did. And they're running that out of 11 stations. They have almost 100 more personnel than we have. Once again, they're only EMS first response. We are EMS transport. I always like to throw Detroit down the bottom there. I can't get exact numbers out of Detroit, but they estimate about 165,000 strictly fire responses running out of 34 stations, just in comparison. So we are busy. We are a very good department, and we take care of our citizens. And slide number six is a breakdown of those calls. As I've hit before, a huge majority of our calls is emergency medical. In August, we did put a fifth ambulance on the road to help assist with those, taking care of those emergency medical calls. But to put that fifth ambulance on the road, we had to sacrifice two firefighters on trucks and move them over to the ambulance. So once again, when a structure fire comes in, that's two less people we have on that scene to fight the structure fire. We understand they're difficult budget times, but going forward, we need to plan for the future and plan for these gaps that are being identified. So what do we do? Slide number seven. EMS was right at the top of that list. We also put out fire suppression. We are also a type-one hazardous material strike team within the state of Michigan. We are one of only five teams in the state of Michigan that are a type-one strike team. We are a type-one urban search and rescue strike team within the state of Michigan. We are one of only three of those in the state of Michigan. Why is that important? Well, first of all, I hang my hat and the pride that our hazardous materials team was the first hazardous materials, formerly recognized hazardous materials response team within the state of Michigan back in the mid-'80s. That team has grown to where it is today primarily through grant funding. The difficulty is, as we all know, through grant funding, we have gone, for example, in the realm of homeland security grant funding back in the early 2000s, of well over a million dollars a year to help support these teams. To this year, the amount of money that's coming from FEMA is in the neighborhood of about $30,000 to $50,000 to support these two assets. But these teams are necessary. These teams have successfully saved lives within our community and successfully saved lots of money within our community. One of the star moments of our team a few years ago was the response when the, we had the chemical released on the Wise Road Treatment Facility. The actions of our hazardous materials team saved numerous lives. It also saved this community, and I do not exaggerate this number, in the neighborhood of about $8.5 million by their actions. So these teams are necessary. Low frequency, high risk if these teams respond. We continue through many other disciplines, through the tower rescue structural collapse. We have a wonderful river that's in this city that we are developing for more use. With that, we have to increase our water rescue capabilities. The more people you put next to the water, the more chance there are people that are going to be in the water. The more chance people are going to be in the water, the more chance that we're going to be busy rescuing them. I hope it never happens, but it does. So our water rescue capabilities have to be there. Water freezes, ice rescue. If you ever want to have some fun, come out and work with us. We'll put you in a suit. Nothing like going through the ice and one of the ponds frozen. It's exhilarating, believe me, even for someone sumo petite like me.
Thank you. No, thanks.
Our, yeah, sumo petite, yes. Our Thames medics, these are our paramedics that are trained to work with our START team with the Lansing Police Department. They make entry to support the officers and render medical aid if there is a victim inside or if one of the officers has an issue or receives trauma on an entry. This is something new to us that has been around only for a few years. It's been a very successful team. We work very close with the Lansing Police Department on that. An additional aspect is our AVI response, our active violence incident. Fortunately, we have never had a response to this city with this team. Hopefully, we never will. We would love to prepare for the worst and never have to go out the door, but we do. This team in the metro area that we participate with is one of very few in the state, and we actually have the capability to respond anywhere within the tri-county area if needed. A very specialized team. On slide eight, what do we do behind the scenes, though? That's the great part. That's where the fire trucks go out the door, lights, sirens, everyone gets to see it. But we do a lot more. Fire Prevention Division, we do a lot of inspections. We work with code compliance. We work with building. We work with the developments and make sure that our community remains safe. Community education, the community is our first line of responders. Until someone calls 911, that person that's on the scene is the first responder. So we provide many levels of community education to assist people to have the needed skills to provide that aid. All the way through our inspections, arson investigation plan review. I don't like to read slides. Additionally, emergency management is what I, the realm that I came out of. Four years working there before I came onto this side. To many members of this council, I've used the term that I kind of view emergency management as the black ops of the city. And I say that with all compassion because it's something that exists, is extremely important. You pray we never have to hear about, but when you do, you want them to show up, do the job extremely well, and just kind of disappear. I was asked, how does emergency management rate when it comes to whether it be a large event or a large disaster? How do you know if they've done their job? My first question was CNN talking about our emergency management division of the city in bad light. Some will say, nope. And I said, then they did their jobs. We have a very strong emergency management division. Our emergency management division one year ago, because of the work through them, and I don't take the credit for this, my team did all of this, saved over 200 structures within the city from facing flooding and a couple million dollars. This is all within our department. This section here is also where I'll bring up real quick. We talk about many of our fees are generated from. This year, the Lansing Fire Department has not changed any of our fees from last fiscal year. We are staying flat. But there are some challenges with regards to some of our fees, particularly on the EMS side. Legislation was passed back in 2016 for the Equality Assurance Assessment Program. The state of Michigan has put a fee down on all EMS transporting agencies within the state of Michigan. It's a per-patient fee. Our current fee is based off the number of patients we transported to the hospital in 2016. This fee is costing us $11,600 a quarter that we pay across the street to the state. This, the intention of the bill was to increase our Medicare returns when we bill. I can't comment if it's done that because we are in the first year of the billing. We just got the bill for our fourth quarter. I can report back a couple quarters into next year, see if our revenue has changed directly related to this. So page eight, this is the Lansing Fire Department. We do currently have a few vacancies within the department. The first one will be that position right in the middle, the EMS Operations Chief. EMS Operations makes up almost 90% of our department, and there are numerous things that go along with that, whether it be licensing, meetings, compliance, many, many issues, QA, QI. Those jobs and responsibilities were dispersed out amongst the Training Division and some of our battalion chiefs. We created this position with work with the union. It was brought to council here through an MOU, and you graciously accepted it. The position will be filled shortly, and this position is funded through a vacant Assistant Chief position. So we created this position at no additional cost to our budget from last year. Some of the positions that are vacant, we will have, we just completed testing last week. We will have a new Emergency Management Chief shortly. Once the testing process evaluated, we'll be filling the captain's position within that division. And with filling the EMS Operations Chief, that'll leave us as of today with five vacancies for firefighter within the department. We have anticipated a couple retirements by the end of May, bringing us to seven, with the possibility of another individual changing career. So possibly eight vacancies by the end of this fiscal year. Real quick on the next slide is just a look at our organizational chart. The reason why I wanted to put this in here is we did restructure it a little bit from the past. The biggest change on it is we did bring up the Fire Marshal's Division and the Emergency Management Division directly under the authority of the Fire Chief. The reason for that is both the Emergency Management Director and the Fire Marshal get their legal powers because they are designees of the Fire Chief. Our org chart had to reflect that. Here's good news for the community, page 11. Lansing Fire Department, through lots of work, has changed from an ISO Class III to an ISO Class II fire department. What does that mean? That means that the insurance rating industry has determined that with our capabilities now, homeowners and businesses' insurance based directly on fire damage can go down. Now, the one drawback is there are a couple insurance companies out there that don't participate in ISO. My recommendation to anyone that owns property in the city, this one will affect April 1, start calling your insurance agents because you can save some money, thanks to your fire department. Going forward, page 12. These are some of the major projects. Yes, Angie brought up, we are going to be completing the replacement of our turnout gear. The difficulty is it's an ensemble for each member of the Fire Department. It's about $4,200 to equip them with personal turnout gear. It has a life expectancy of 10 years. That 10 years, one day, by regulation, we have to take it out of service. So that plan will be completed, so all of our people will be safe come this fiscal year. We are working on developing a fire cadet program. Once again, good news, the preliminary steps in the fire cadet program to harness and capture the talent of our youth within Lansing schools. We can start this program, it looks like, with grant funding and moving forward, looking at budgetary funding after that. We are also looking at a community integrated paramedic program. That program will also help reduce the risk to our community. Will reduce some of the costs on our EMS side, provide in-home care when some, sometimes, so people will not have to go to the emergency department for non-emergent visits. There's direct communication with physicians in these programs, and the insurance companies have now figured out billing codes so they can start paying us for this service. An example of this would be if we have a patient that's in home health, that's in home care, if they have, for example, a urinary catheter has to be placed regularly. Very common when that happens, they can develop infections. So instead of calling an ambulance for $1,000 to transport them to the emergency department, facing way between a $2,000 and $10,000 bill, and then plus another couple hundred-dollar ambulance bill to bring that person home, the community paramedic goes to their home, consults with the patient, consults with the physician via online, basically through a face chat, can provide initial antibiotic care, whether it be oral or through IV. Doctor will call in the prescription. Family can go with the prescription. The person never leaves home, and the insurance companies will pay us for that visit. So they stay in the comfort of their home, and we provide the care that the citizen needs. So that is a program that we are actively going forward to. Oh, yeah, and by the way, state of Michigan's got a lot of grant money to help us kick it out the door. So we potentially could run a program like this, at least for the first couple of years, on grant money to help us develop going forward. Warning sirens in our city continue the upgrade. I apologize, I'm going long here. As all of you know, I can talk for a long time. I'll speed it up here. Our warning sirens within the city, on average, are about 50 years old. We are in the active process of replacing them. The plan that we are looking to put in place should have all of them replaced and have not have a single emergency siren within the city of more than 10 years old within the next five to six years, if we can continue on the process that we're going for. The last one is relocation of our Training Division. Our Training Tower on Alpha Street access is in dire need of replacement. Sadly, through years of budgetary issues and all that, we've gone from a point where the building can be refixed to the point where now it needs to be replaced. To do the work needed at that facility, to get it up to the standard needed, we would have to invest in the neighborhood of about $2.5 million into that facility. So what we are going to do is we are working for better use and utilization of currently owned city properties. We are going to be taking over a portion of the SWAC on the same level the city clerk is. Us with Chris Swoop, we've done a phenomenal job working together. We're going to be working on one end, they're going to be on the other. So the citizens are coming in to work with the clerk, they're going to get to see their firefighters training. They're going to get to know what we're doing because that's where we're going to move our training grounds to. So that being said, on the last slide, and I appreciate you hanging in there with me all the way to the end, the Lansing Fire Department is a world-class organization. I will put my reputation and any of my firefighters against any firefighter in this state or country, and this citizen should be proud of them.
Before I open this up to questions, I just want to remind the audience that we are still in committee of a whole. That will take about another 15 minutes that we have for questioning. So I would appreciate it if everyone could please be mindful and quiet during this process so that we can make sure that our questions are heard and we hear the responses appropriately. With that, are there questions for the Fire Department? Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. The first question I have is about the community paramedicine response. Are those going to be paramedics that are on staff that are dedicated to that, or will that be like a coordinated effort with local RNs? Or, I mean, are you looking at those being dedicated staff members?
Yes, the community integrated paramedicine program would be paramedics. We could start with current staff members and then even, and expand our staff possibly going forward, depending on which avenue through the program we need to go through. There are about five different options moving down the road of the program. We can either focus with just one specialty. We can work the hospital. The best level of the program, which is the one that would take the longest time, is we'd have to do an integrated dispatch with a 911 center, where now it truly becomes an education that when someone calls a 911 center, there is a true formal triage that is done on that call. And it's actually even determined if a paramedic, if an ambulance has to roll out the door. Let me correct myself. They may just need a visit by a community paramedic. They show up, they do an assessment and provide the care needed, or that assessment can be done and say, yeah, you really do need to go to the hospital. Then an ambulance is brought in. Once again, it'll cost savings for the patient and more comfort level there.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question is, given that there are vacancies and given that there have been things in the news lately discussing hiring and the process of hiring and the diversity of hiring, what is being done at this point to ensure a more diverse hiring class? And is there still an issue with finding more paramedics than EMTs versus EMTs and then training them while they're on the job? If you could speak to that.
I think the chief is going to answer that one.
I had the pleasure of meeting with HR, and we discussed several options. One of the things that I like to see is a more diverse pool by actually opening up so that we have a bigger pool of candidates. And that would allow us to see the paramedic need. You might have EMTs. They're just simply weeks away from becoming paramedics. That could get excluded. So I'd like to see it opened up and be able to do a good assessment.
Okay.
Additionally, if I could add that, we do have in this year's budget going forward, the funds to send the funds to send three more of our EMTs to paramedic school to train them up.
Okay. Was that the issue, was it that you had too many EMTs that were not trained, that needed to go through the program, or was there an emphasis on hiring somebody fully trained as a paramedic as opposed to the EMT? Because that was one of the issues raised and some of the things that we read, is that the pool tends to be less diverse in the paramedic-trained pool as opposed to the EMT-trained pool, which can be trained on the job.
That's true. When you look at the pool, I don't want to quote numbers, but you might have like 100 EMTs and 25 paramedics. So, if you open up a pool, and you open up to have more people apply, then you're able to actually have more diversity. And just like you said, it depends on where they are in the process. So, in the future, what we'll be doing is looking at the whole, the applicant and the entire process.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Washington.
Just very quickly, I am really happy to see the institution of the Fire Cadet, I think, program. I think that will answer a lot of our problems in the future, because it's my understanding you'll be reaching out to local high school kids, et cetera, correct? And I think, you know, to have homegrown is always better. Thanks.
It was one of the things that in Palm Beach County, we did. We have one of the largest cadet programs in the nation. We had over 175 kids that we were able to reach out to, many of which would not have actually ever had an experience with fire rescue. So, it's a great program.
Councilmember Hussein.
Historically, you know, as we've hired EMTs, a number of them have not went through the training to become paramedics, and I'm wondering, is that a symptom of us not allocating enough money for that? Or is that a symptom of maybe the benefit is not large enough? It doesn't essentially move enough people to go through that training? I'm wondering what the symptom is, because my understanding is that a number of the folks that we do hire on as EMTs just simply do not go through the training.
Well, in all honesty, first of all, it's intensive training, and I'd say any of my EMTs currently could go through the training. It's a year commitment. Part of the difficulty with the commitment is now you come off the 24-hour shift that they're accustomed to, and they're going to school for five, for four days a week for 11 months. The other difficulty is, and we are going into contract negotiations, we are going to discuss with the union, is that there is discussions with regards to the shift premium that a paramedic receives, is it beneficial to them? Right now, at a full-paid firefighter/paramedic, the pay difference for a year between an EMT and a paramedic, the shift differential is about $2,800. And no matter when that ambulance rolls out the door, the paramedic is ultimately responsible for anything that happens to that patient.
Other questions for the Fire Department? Couple of questions that I have for you. We've heard a lot about the equipment, that a need for equipment. I don't see that outlined in the budget, such as another ambulance, or a ladder truck, or any of those things. Is that something with the, that is being covered under the appropriations that we're going to be getting through the sale of properties? I'm seeing yes. Will that suffice the needs that you have currently for the Fire Department, or are there still additional needs out there?
Sorry, we're fighting for the microphone.
That's okay.
It'll be a good step forward. The difficulty on the Fire Department's side is we've gotten to where we are because of we don't have effective long-term planning for vehicle replacement. A lot of our large-scale replacement has been based on emergency reflex response to, "I have got a truck that's now totally failed, so now I got to come up with a couple hundred thousand dollars for an engine, or a million dollars for a ladder truck." I don't blame Angie or anyone with this. A lot of it is just, when you're, it's difficult to budget, you know, down the road for the purchase of a 1.2 or 1.3 million dollar vehicle that's only rolling out the door 1,000 times a year. That is something going forward, a plan that we are working on with Angie and with the Mayor's Office, with the appropriations from other funds. There is the ambulance within the public, public's, excuse me, within the Public Services Budget for one placing one ambulance. The other difficulty we have, here's an example. We have one ambulance on our fleet that is three years old. That one ambulance has never left the city limits of Lansing. That ambulance has 132,000 miles on it in three years. And you think about the driving that's put on an ambulance. The difficulty is, is that it's a multi-level. It's not just finding the money to put into that ambulance. It's also getting the rate utilization of that ambulance down to an acceptable level, that you're not putting undue wear and tear on that ambulance, or undue wear and tear on the crew that's on that ambulance. It's also getting the education of the community of when 911 is necessary, when it's not. If we can get the age of the ambulance and the use of the ambulance down to a certain window, then the long-term repair costs of that ambulance go down, because our preventive maintenance can now take care of things when they're small and not when they're big. So, yeah, I don't mean to prolong the answer there, Madam President, but it is, it is a portion of our long plan is what it is. Yes.
Great. Did you have a follow-up to that question? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I am, I'm glad you brought up the managing of the long-term costs, and I'm wondering, I have two questions. One, is there, is there an amortization that they pay into, like, every time that the ambulance rolls out, is there a piece that goes into a fund for replacement costs like we do in some of the other fleets? And two, do you use any kind of fleet amortization software to gauge the wear and tear on the vehicles with those plugins underneath the dash? And the reason I'm asking that is because I just learned about the way Dean Transportation does some of their fleet management, and they, they actually roll the vehicles a lot sooner than, than people would think. They don't run them into the ground, because they get the return on them. In other communities, that buy them up and then allow them to reinvest, so they're not being, they're not being driven until they can't be driven anymore. And I'm wondering if that's something that we could partner with to sort of work on that kind of software, or if that even exists. I don't know.
I think Angie would like to weigh in on this one. Go ahead, Angie.
Sure, sure, yeah. So, the Fleet Fund was moved to what we call an Internal Service Fund several years ago with the idea that we need to plan for the future and fund for the future. The problem has really been availability of dollars. So, when that was begun, we started out with a certain level, it's not full replacement, but we have ramped that up over the years to try to, to get to a closer number-two full replacement. We're not there at this point. That is, that is the problem with constraint in dollars. On top of that, we used to have three different garages. Those were consolidated into one garage several years ago, too. There was some residual debt service to do that, which, which obviously created efficiencies, but that debt service came off a good part of that. We still have some of that existing, but a good part of that came off about two years ago. So, that has freed up additional funding as well. So, for several years, constraint in funding, as well as the recession, has really, has really brought that. The intention is to ramp up the funding over time, but again, constraint in resources.
There are programs out there that do exist that we could model after, and we have looked at a few of them, and we're exploring what the best option would be for us in the city. It's something that we have to work in conjunction with Public Service Department and the Fleet Management, because they actually manage our fleet directly for us.
And just to clarify, you had indicated that it's $4,200 for turnout gear, is that correct?
That's correct. If we purchase one individual set, it's $4,200. The rate that's dictated there, that's, that's budget for this, just for the turnout gear, is 90 sets of turnout gear. Because of our volume, they've got the price down to $3,250 for us.
$3,250. All right, thank you. One of the questions I ask on a regular basis in the Fire Department has to do with the collections of the ambulance fees. You knew I was going to ask that.
Ellen does a great job for preparing us.
Okay. Could you tell us where we are on the collections on that? I know we base this on what supposedly insurance companies will pay.
Where we are, to give a summary for the last fiscal year, for fiscal year 18, which is the last overall we had, the Lansing Fire Department billed $11,940,000 and change for ambulance services. Through contractual, some contractuals for definition is basically the difference between, for example, if we enter a contract with PHP or Blue Cross, and they say that ALS ambulance run is worth $490. For us to agree to accept that payment, then we also have to agree not to send the differential of the bill to the patient. So, for contractuals, our contractual loss on billing is $6,920,000. On fiscal year 18, we collected $3,821,898.35 is what we collected last year. When it comes to collections, currently on collections, overall for history, we, I don't have the exact figure, and I apologize, I can send the exact figures.
He'd get us that.
Yes, I'll tell you what, instead of me presenting, I'll send you the exact figures, because we just got those from our billing.
Could you tell us what the trend is also with that, meaning over the last three years, what our collection rate has been, and?
It's actually improved. It was about four years ago, we changed billing companies.
Yes.
We changed billing companies. It's, hasn't been a dramatic change in the overall scheme of things, but we've gone from in the neighborhood of about a 31% collection rate to about a 33.5% collection rate. When you're talking 33, you know, a 2.5% increase on $11 million.
Councilor, Vice President Spatafor.
Probably not a real quick question, but a question for you anyway. Information technology, $1.035 million, like a $50,000 increase, what's, what's that going for?
Yes.
Sorry about that. In each department, you'll see that allocation. That is our information technology department, and basically, a lot like the fleet, the cost for that is allocated among the different departments, because information technology is needed to do just about anything any department does.
What does that cover?
It covers a combination of the maintenance costs, personnel costs for our information technology department, as well as in this current year, replacement of, of some of the, of the equipment and PCs and that, those types of things, technology equipment is what I'm trying to say. And that's, that mimics very much like our fleet is, because our fleet department also charges out to the various departments, and that's for replacement as well as maintenance of the fleet, same with, with the IT department.
Where would, where is that, the fleet one, on this general fund expenditures?
That's noted under, there's a line called Equipment, Equipment's.
Rental?
Re, Equipment Repair and Maintenance.
On page 17 of 32.
Equipment Repair and Maintenance. I'm looking at 17.
Equipment rental, and it's.
Equipment rental, I'm sorry.
$1,950,000.
And that doesn't go towards any long-term planning for replacement of ambulances?
It does. It's, so there's a piece of it, but it's not full replacement. So, when we talk about, and that was, that's when I talked about a few years ago, that was moved to an Internal Service Fund, that was because, rather than trying to replace things on a, on more of a, on fire basis, or a, or a, something is really, we wanted to be able to fund replacement of vehicles going forward better. So, we are not under a full replacement schedule, but a partial replacement schedule.
Angie, this is probably not germane to this particular discussion, but is it possible to see some sort of a detailed analysis of that IT line? I know $50,000 increase is more than we've got total spent for ambulance maintenance in the budget, so I'm just trying to understand why the IT costs go up so significantly for this budget, and probably for the rest of them as well?
And a lot of that has to do with increased IT costs, quite frankly, for maintenance of the software programs and things, yeah.
Yeah, I just wondered what those are. It'd be nice to see that, especially if, I mean, $50,000 increase to the Fire Department could be better used elsewhere if it's a software that Fire's not using. I'd just like to understand what we're spending those dollars on, please.
Let me have IT, and if you would have that information, have them, have that available. One final question, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. And I think that was, I was going to request that, because I'm wondering if that allocation, the way that it's done, if it's like, it's an allocation of general expense over all the departments in, on behalf of IT, but how is that calculated? Is it by workstations? Is it by number of employees? Is it by average cost to that department, you know, with a certain percentage? I'm curious to know what that ends up being.
It's actually a combination of those. So, some of it has to do with the software for the various departments, some of it has to do personnel allocation, because when we're looking at PC replacements, that's generally on a personnel basis for those that have PCs. So, it's actually a combination of, the methodology has a combination in there.
Vice President Spatafor.
That's a useful answer. I guess I would like to see a breakdown and a roll-up, and if we could do that with the fleet as well, because I noticed the fleet costs didn't change over the last couple cycles for the Fire Department, even though it sounds like our need is there. So, I'd like to better understand those breakdowns, specifically in IT, please.
Okay. With those final questions, we want to thank you for your presentation. We have additional questions, we'll get those to you. And again, we welcome you to Lansing Chief. We appreciate that. So, as we move on in the agenda, the next item is setting the public hearing for the City of Lansing's budget, and that would be for May 13. Vice President Spatafor.
I move the resolution to set the public hearing for the City of Lansing's budget for fiscal year 1920 to take place on May 13 at 7:00 p.m.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. The next is the renaming of the City Council Chambers to Tony Benavides Lansing City Council Chambers. The resolution is in your packet. This, we would just be passing the resolution tonight. We are working on putting together the presentation for that and the ceremony as we get the appropriate renaming done for the chambers. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution renaming the City Council Chambers to Tony Benavides Lansing City Council Chambers.
With that, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, thank you, Jody. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Next is an ordinance for the change of 292. This has to do, if you remember, with the Teamster and UAW, we had approximately three employees at this mind effect, and this would allow them to use their service credits for vesting. We have a motion on the ordinance.
I move the ordinance as described by the President.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. Last, we have revised counsel, outside counsel legal list for the Board of Water and Light. Mr. City Attorney.
It's listed as for the Board of Water and Light. It's a combined list. Every year, we present to the council under the charter for your approval of a list of outside counsel that can be used by either the city, its departments, or the Board of Water and Light.
But are we adding one for the board, or is this just the annual list?
This is the annual list. This has been vetted through the Board of Water and Light, they approve of it.
What I would like to see, and I don't have any problem with us moving this forward, but what I'd like to see is if you could give us an outline of the different law firms and what they, what services they might render, or expertise that they might render.
This is a list that's been added to over the years.
I know. That's exactly where I am.
And it gives us, it gives us a number of firms that we can use, if we use, and again, we try to keep everything in-house, but there may be cases where, in police cases, for example, you have to give outside counsel to the local officers, or it may be a sewer case that we'd have to go out or collective bargaining, whatever, but I will give you that list to explanation.
Vice President Spatafor.
I move the revised, I move the resolution with the revised outside legal counsel list for the City of Lansing and the Board of Water and Light.
Have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. The communication for Jack Alice and Andrew budget proposal, we're going to move that to the night that we have, excuse me, the Lansing Entertainment Authority here, so that if there's any additional questions that they can look at at that. As a, yes, just a second. As a late, we have a late item that's at your desk that is coming out of Committee of a Hold. This would. This would normally have gone through general services. But this has to do with noise waiver that is needed by the Public Service Department and the contractor in order to be able to do some roadwork in the Caesar E Chavez Avenue and Washington Avenue that's dealing with resurfacing. We would be holding the public hearing, because again, this came to us late, on April 22nd, but unless there were a number of concerns, we would also be passing it on April 22nd. If you look at the back of the resolution, it explains the work and the things that are going to be done, done in the notice that would be sent to the public that is near the construction area. Are there any questions on this? Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Do we know why we are getting this at the last minute?
Samantha.
There was an issue with how this was coded in Laserfish, and it got kind of lost in the system strangely. So it was a, it was a weird tech issue. So we apologize.
Any other questions? Vice President Spatafor.
No, but I'll remove the resolution for the noise ordinance for Hoffman Brothers, setting the public hearing for April 22nd at 7:00 PM in the City of Lansing Council Chambers.
Have a motion, and again, this will be entered as a late item as we start our council meeting and take it up at the appropriate time. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose. We will adjourn the committee of a whole and move into the council meeting in five minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. City Attorney, I had said yes and...
Well, I didn't know whether you were talking council or committee of a whole, but I'd like to, members of council, Madam President, Mr. Vice President, we have a new addition to the City Attorney's Office, and I'd like to introduce her to you, Mary Bowen. Would you stand up, please? Mary is a graduate of U of M Flint undergrad and a graduate of the University, Michigan State University College of Law. She has been practicing about 10 years in various roles. And in addition to practicing law, getting, just before she was entering the field, she interned at the Attorney General's Office, at the City of Flint Law Department, some local law firms. She's been in private practice herself for about five years. She also was Assistant Director of MSU College of Law Legal Services. And so she's had a full day today. And we wanted, it was fortunate that she started on a Monday because she got to see the full flavor of government at work. So, Mary, welcome.
We welcome Mary. One final thing I did forget. In the appointment to the Tri-County Office on Aging, beginning of the year, two of the council members have notified me that they have not been able to meet the meetings and attend this. We're doing a ceremony tonight, actually, for Tri-County on Aging, and we are in a consortium with them for 45 years. We are required to have two council members sit on that committee. Patricia Spitzley has agreed to be one of the council members. This is the third Monday of each month at 3:30, and the meeting lasts approximately an hour. We need, all right, we will be then appointing Councilmember Jody Washington. Our next meeting, their next meeting is April 15th. With that, when we close this evening, we do have a committee of a whole next Monday, which is unusual. It's usually the first Monday, but because we were lacking quorum, we will have one next Monday, and it will start at 5:30. But on the nights of council meetings, since we have presentations being made, our council meeting starts at five, or committee of a whole meeting starts at 5:00. So with that, we are adjourned.